So Al, while it's still getting up to speed, as soon as it gets up live, then I will let everybody in. The, from the waiting room, I'm getting some more ding doorbells. And Sandy may be one of them. It looks like Sandra is one. So I'm going to admit everybody in and it'll take them a couple of seconds to gear up. That way I can make sure that they're muted.
Do I want to get started on the meeting before Sandy gets here?
Well, let's see. Okay, well, she's trying. Yeah, Sandy, are you there?
Yeah, I'm gonna hang up the phone.
Okay, so Sanders here and the rest of them need to be on mute.
I'll warn you, I'm on my, I'm on my phone.
Can you see us?
One at a time, I'm seeing you, Al.
Yeah, because he was the one speaking, so.
I apologize, my computer's in the shop, I was trying to use a tablet and it wouldn't let me, it wouldn't give me the audio.
All right, for those guests, those that are observing, you, you have to stay muted. And so I'm muted, everybody, but the planning commission and staff members who will make the presentations. Sue, you, Sue, you can hear us, right?
Yes, I can.
And I think Jessica, muted you, Nancy, I muted you. Oh, there we go. Sandra, you're still okay?
Yes, I'm just on my phone, apologies.
All right, so Facebook Live, just call it all of that. Mr. Cappers, it's, it's, the floor is yours.
Okay, welcome to Troy Planning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, May 13th, please call the roll.
Mr. Walkie. Mr. Walkie.
Unmute yourself. How'd you get muted?
I don't know.
All right, you're, you're unmuted now.
Okay.
I'm calling the roll, Mr. Walkie.
I'm here, yes, I am here.
Mayor Oda? Mrs. Erlich?
Here.
Mr. Titterington?
Here.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Here.
Mr. Cappers?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Here.
Here.
All are present, I will say I had a very hard time hearing the mayor.
Okay, Robin, if you don't mind speaking up. Okay, all right, we have our minutes before us of our April 22nd meeting, are there any additions, corrections, or deletions of those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, who made the motion?
Mr. Walkie.
Mr. Walkie, and you got the second also? All of us signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? They stand accepted. Okay, the first thing we're going to do on the agenda, I'm going to make a change, item number five is going to be moved down to item number six. Okay? And vice versa. Staff, there's another matters section on the agenda, do you have anything for us to discuss?
Yeah, we do have one item under other, just add.
Okay, you'll be, you'll be item number six, okay? And the historic district application for 126 South Cherry Street will be last. All righty? Okay, first matter to come before the commission today is the historic district application for 107 and 109 East Main Street for repainting, the staff have to report.
Yes, sir, we do, the applicant, Mr. Douglas Boyle, owner of 109 East Main Street and Mojo's Bar and Grill, is requesting the approval from the planning commission to modify the paint color of a portion of 107 East Main Street and his property at 109 East Main Street, both are located in the B3 Central Business District. The OHI form describes both buildings as part of a commercial core and of high Victorian Italianate architecture, both having bracketed cornices, panel breezes, and double窗 windows. The form also notes that both buildings are significant contributing structures and listed on the National Register. The applicant is requesting modification to the properties, once again, occupied by Mojo's Bar and Grill, to be painted to match the existing storefront at 109 East Main Street, which is the location of Mojo's main entrance. 109 East Main, again, the applicant's proposing to paint the second and third floor windows, window hoods, sills, and the cornice trim in Sherwin-Williams Tri-Cornd Black, that is SW6258, and with the rosette detail in the frieze painted in the Sherwin-Williams Real Red, SW6868. For the portion of 107 East Main Street, this portion is the storefront that is occupied by Mojo's Bar and Grill. He's asking or proposing to paint the gray portion in Sherwin-Williams Tri-Cornd Black, SW6258, and the trim details that are currently red are to remain and painted in Sherwin-Williams Red, or Real Red, SW6868, again, to match the existing trim detail of the current existing storefront at 109. The application has been reviewed for compliance with all the requirements of the Zone Code, except for the addition of the Zone Standards imposed by the historic district regulations. Staff does recommend approval for proposed modifications due to the proposed alterations are in keeping in the historic nature of the district. While his paint scheme is appropriate for the style of building and will maintain visual relationship with the streetscape, and this modification does not alter any of the historical or architectural features of the property.
Okay, any questions of staff? Commission won't take any action on this matter.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion is second, is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, next matter is the historic district application for 14 West Main Street, the Moller Brew Barn, for modification to the fence and installation of some shade canopies and the addition of a silo, the staff had to report.
Yes, sir, the applicant, Moller Brew Barn, is requesting the planning commission to review their proposed modifications, which, as you, we do, installations, shade canopies, and the addition of a silo.
And Mr. Watson? I, I want to interrupt you just for a minute, whatever you're doing now, keep doing, you're a little bit, your volume wasn't very high on the first matter.
That's because I switched the mics over to the one closest to him.
Good, good, I like that, thank you, I'm sorry for the interruption.
No problem. The OHI form lists this property as a two-story brick church with an unusual rough-faced wire-cut exterior, is well-preserved example of early church design in the 20th century, with character-defining, defining features that include large windows, wood framework, wall buttresses, stone coping, stone trim at the windows and doors, and rough-faced wire-cut brick. This property is Zone B2 Central Business and is not listed on the National Historic Register. The proposal is the addition of a 15-foot-tall silo, 24 by 24 by 24 triangle-shaped canopies, and a modification to the existing fence, which will be along the side of the building and creates the outdoor seating area. There is a rendering attached to your packet. Again, the request is in addition of a silo, this silo is 15 feet tall, 15 feet in diameter, with plain steel color. This will be in the side and rear portion of the back of the yard or beer garden. And again, this will provide storage for seasonal items like umbrellas, grills, and smokers, and other items for the outdoor beer garden. The second portion of the request is the modification of fence layout. This will be to include and enclose this silo and expanding the seating area of the beer garden and allow the seating area, again, to continue to conform to the requirements for having a beer garden, as well as providing some screening. The last proposal is to install the triangular shade canopies to the outdoor seating area, one in black and one in white color, using heavy-duty outdoor shelter cloth, this will provide some UV protection shade for the beer garden. Patrons and staff recommends approval for these modifications, this is the back portion of the property and not the more historic portion of the front, which is the church section. It's an outdoor section, it's temporary in nature, all these items can be removed at a later date if, if desired.
Any questions of staff?
I've got one question.
Mr. McGary?
You said it was going to be plain steel, I, I assume that that's galvanized steel?
Yes, sir, they, they currently have a silo in the back for their grain storage, this will match the same in a galvanized steel color.
Okay.
Mr. Walkie, did you have a question?
Yeah, did I hear correctly, the staff is recommending approval?
Yes, sir.
Is staff concerned at all about taking away the parking areas in the back?
Since the lot was already limited prior to this applicant being in that location, there is ample off-street parking in the front and on the side street. At night, there's also the parking there on the side that is a part of Patty Rose's property. I believe the owner has a, an agreement with them to use that at night. So they're only, they're really only losing, I believe, two spaces. So they still have access to the back grain area, they do have a couple of extra spaces back there between the, those two portions of the new section that they're wanting to modify and the existing enclosure for the trash and silo bin.
Have you concerned the, the effect of that with the reconstruction of Main Street, how that's going to impact that, if any?
Since that hasn't been fully vetted through, we, we're just looking at it as it stands now. Again, the, the site only had, I believe, eight spaces total before the, this tenant moved in. They, they reduced it down to the five and now they'll have the three, but again, they still have on-street parking.
On-street, I think there is B3, right?
It's B3, this is B2.
Any other questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, what is behind on the other side of the alley from this?
It's on the other side of the alley, it's a residential.
There is residential, there are two garages for those two adjoining properties on the other side of the alley. They have garages that block the direct site from the house.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Commission won't take any action on this matter.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to second, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Approved.
And now we go down to what was number six on the agenda, the rezoning application for 6 North Madison Street, the staff have to report.
Yes, sir, property only, sorry, property owner Kelly Larker has requested the planning commission to consider allowing the rezoning of 6 North Madison Street, this is parcel D08026290 and the vacant lot just to the north of D08026300. Point 21 of an acre, this property is currently zoned R6, which is two-family residential, and the applicant is requesting the parcels be rezoned OC1 Office Commercial District. Like I said, this is a combined 2.1 or 0.21 acres, and, which is holding a 8,450, I'm sorry, a 1,250-square-foot building and, which was previously used as a beauty salon. The other surrounding zoning districts are B2 General Commercial Districts to the east and south, R5 Single Family Residential to the west and southwest, and R6 Two-Family Residential to the north. The applicant cited the reasons for the proposed rezoning as to be able to use the property for the continued use of a beauty salon. There is a beauty salon that has been currently approved and permitted to occupy that structure. The building was constructed as a commercial building and has continued to be used in a commercial use since the 1970s. Zoning code describes the current R6 zoning district as designed to accommodate two-family dwellings on lots with areas of at least 6,000 square feet and not less than 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. Zoning code describes the OC1 district as designed to accommodate a mixture of office and commercial uses consisting of groupings of professional research, executive, accounting, administrative, and other similar uses. Attached to your packet is a map showing those surrounding zoning districts and properties. This, as I mentioned before, this property has always been used as commercial with a previous tenant as a beauty salon and this new tenant continuing the service. The rezoning will allow the property to be used in a conforming manner for, for the uses that have continued to operate on the property and this would allow the current tenant and owner to allow for proper signage for a commercial use rather than being in the residential zoning. The OC1 allows for similar low-intense uses that the adjacent commercial areas already provides down the street along West Main Street. Staff does recommend approval, this rezoning is consistent with the existing design of the property and surrounding properties. It does provide a buffer to the north residential zoning districts. We are also going, trying to reach out to the property owners of the Chase Bank, which is on the other side of the railroad track as well. They're in the same situation, they're in a residential zoning but a commercial use. So this will not be the only property that we seek this change for. For the public hearing, due to the straightforward nature of the rezoning request and the compliance within the city of Troy's comprehensive plan and the fact that city council is required to hold a public hearing, if, if the request proceeds on, staff does not recommend a public hearing.
Any questions of staff? Okay, this is a two-part matter, first of all, do we want to hold a public hearing?
I'll make a motion, we do not hold a public hearing.
I'll second.
There's a motion, second, any further discussion? Please call the roll, keep in mind, affirmative vote means you do not want to have a public hearing. Please call the roll.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Motion is approved, there will not be a public hearing by the planning commission.
Okay, now we deal with the recommendation on this rezoning request. Commission want to take any action?
I'll move that the planning commission recommend approval.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, second, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay, on the agenda, we're going down to the other matters section of the agenda, the staff have something else to come before the planning commission.
Yes, we do, thank you, you should have received or will have, we'll be receiving, okay, we'll be receiving a information regarding a webinar training, this is from the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. It, it is for Wednesday, May 20th, it's at 11:00 a.m. And it talks about, the Secretary of Interiors has 10 guidelines that they use to provide proper rehab techniques, but this takes a step further and says, it reads, how do you judge when a building element can be repaired versus having to be replaced? How do you handle later alterations to a building and what if your building is missing historic features? It is put on by the, the State Historic Preservation Office, so we wanted to bring that to your attention in case you wish to attend.
And, and you'll be sending us out a written, written invitation?
Yes, there's a website link to it, it is free of charge.
Okay. Just send us information on that. Anything else?
That is it, under other.
Okay, let's go back to what was originally item number five on the agenda. The historic district application for the demolition of the residence, residence and garage structures located at 126 South Cherry Street, the staff have to report.
Yes, we do, thank you, this is a request from the owners with the First United Methodist Church to receive a certificate of appropriateness from the planning commission. It does involve both the residential and garage structure located at 126 South Cherry Street. This property is zoned OR1, which is Office Residential District. It's located near the intersection of West Cherry Street and West Canal Street. The OHI form describes the building as a two-story high Victorian Italianate design, built in 1878. It talks about important features, which are listed as a double-molded door crowned by a shaped molded and bracketed cap, polygonal bay in the left bay with box cornice and brackets. It references the ugly porch on the front, that's their terms, not mine, and states the structure is a quote, "a fine house but for the bad porch." Also, it talks about alterations include, it says alterations include an inappropriate front porch and modified porch doors on the OHI form. And that was attached to your packet as well. This property is not listed and is not eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. Some background on the property, was purchased by the First United Methodist Church in 2013. It says, from the application, the intent was to rent the property as a single-family residential unit to offset the mortgage and maintenance cost. This happened until the Ohio Department of Health found that there was lead paint in the residence and also in the garage structure. The church was informed that this property could not be occupied as a residential unit until the lead paint was abated. The church informed us that they considered renting the property as basically office use, which is allowed in their district, but that was unsuccessful. The actual full report from the Ohio Department of Health was in your packet as well. As part of the application, the church sought out several repair costs for some items, one of them being structural, it talks about a structural evaluation provided by Tracy Miller of Consulting Engineers. It talks about the structural reinforcement repairs to this property were extensive in addition to some cosmetic repairs and the possibility of lead-based paint and asbestos with the house that would need to be removed professionally. It states that a financial review of the repairs required should be weighed against the possibility of demolition of the property. That was also included in your packet. There was a repair estimate from Westfield Construction for some electrical, mechanical, interior and exterior repairs. Those were listed as 200, just a little over $223,000, was also in your packet. And the last estimate they provided was by Foundation Services LLC and that was for repairs to the back porch, portions of the foundation and support beams, and those costs were listed at $33,500. Those, all those, all that information was provided in the packet. I will let you know that I believe Mr. Watson and I visited inside the property on two, two occasions. One with church leaders, the second one was with the engineer and we also invited the Miami County Building Inspector, Building Official, Rob England. The information we learned on the inside did have a lot of weight to our recommendation. Some of the items that were discussed would be removal of asbestos would be in the building. A lot of asbestos in, in those types of times were in the plasters that were used throughout the walls. If they would remove that, that would have to be abated. Of course, they would have the lead abatement, which would be required to use it as a residence for that by the Department of Health. In addition, there were some rotting boards up in the attic above the roof and that the way the beams were spaced out were not up to code. And there were some electrical issues with old knob and tube electrical wiring. The information we found out from Mr. England and we have in an email from him that states that the residential building code requires that any alterations or upgrades to the structure, of course, need to be inspected, more importantly, need to be brought up to the current code status in order to pass those inspections. We responded back asking him if it was used for offices, if that would be also true. And he said that that was correct, the Ohio Building Code Commercial, it's the same with any new or upgraded installments, installations would need to be brought up to current code. So what we came up with when going through this was that there's a, a lot of repairs, and I'm not talking about just the outside repairs of peeling paint and some items of that, but more internal issues that are pretty significant in cost, which, which did have a, a pretty good weight to that. Of course, with the standards for demolition, it does have to meet two of the four criteria to be considered for a certificate of appropriateness by the planning commission. Those were in your packet, I'll just kind of summarize them. The first one was that the structure has incurred extensive damage to basic structural elements and, and deemed basically an immediate danger to the public safety as declared by the chief building official. This has not happened. Criteria number one was not met. The second criteria was the structure is listed as non-qualifying or is not consistent with other structures in the historic district. Staff felt that this criteria was met as the structure is listed as non-qualifying for the National Registry, which is what the qualification is in the package for. So because of that, it's not an and, it is an or, we felt that criteria number two was satisfied. Criteria number three was the square foot cost of meaning a minimum building code would be, would exceed the square foot market value. Staff put together, I think it's Exhibit H in your packet, we did a comparison cost on that item and there were, I believe, seven properties that were listed, very comparable, what we felt were comparable properties based upon square footage and location and also valuation to the properties, the average square foot, the average valuation of the square foot repair cost would have been $65.70 a square foot when you took those comparable costs into consideration. When we took all the rehab and repair costs provided by the applicant and that came to a little over $400,000 or over $118 a square foot. So essentially almost twice the amount as the market value. So we felt based upon that, that information, that criteria number three was satisfied. The fourth criteria listed in the zoning code is the structure is contributing and has been declared a public nuisance and its removal will not adversely affect the streetscape. And when staff reviewed this, we looked at, at several, several factors. One was, it was declared a public nuisance by the Ohio Department of Health. We tried to determine what the public nuisance meant, so we reviewed the Ohio Vice Code, found the definition and felt that the definition adequately sufficed the building as it was posted unsafe as a public nuisance. And as far as being declared, as far as having a negative impact, we felt that the block has already been essentially shaped because there is a, what I call a missing tooth already along that block. There was a property at 118 South Cherry Street years ago that was removed and then looking around the area, as you look surrounding property on Canal Street, there's several buildings were removed there and contained green space as well as where 118 was and of course, behind 118. So we felt that the streetscape really wasn't negatively impacted by that and so we felt that the fourth criteria was satisfied as well. So we felt that it met three of the four criteria, which makes it allowable to come before the planning commission. The reuse plan submitted by the applicant, it's pretty minimal, it's creating green space that will be leveled off with dirt and returned to grass with seed and straw. That was the only thing that was submitted for, for that. We do know that if they wish to use the property besides green space, anything they do on the property would be required to come back before the planning commission to receive a certificate of appropriateness from the planning commission. With that information, staff does recommend approval of the demolition because it does satisfy the criteria for, for demolition of the residential garage and residential structure with the condition that a performance bond is posted with sufficient funds to ensure completion of the demolition and the reuse plan. We find this based upon the following, the property meets the criteria listed on the historic district for demolition standards. The property is not listed on the National Register. The property is not eligible for inclusion on the National Register. Staff did not feel a demolition would, would provide a negative impact on the historic significance of the streetscape. The property, when we researched it, had little to no significance historically about it and the minimal reuse plan was submitted as required by the code. So we felt the, the requirements had been satisfied. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, first of all, I want everyone to know that we received almost 200 pages of documentation on this demolition issue and I want the planning commission to be And I want the planning commission to be comfortable about going forward with the discussion. Have you all reviewed the, the almost two hundred pages of documentation, including the letters and the materials submitted to us both pro and con by the public? Needs more time for such consideration. Very good. We have received a, a number of emails from the public concerning this demolition issue. Both pro and con. We have now all read those and considered those and we're ready to discuss this. So let's begin the discussion. Any questions for staff?
Well, this may not be staff, this could be for the director, but what are the rules of participation in these virtual meetings?
There is none. The, that's why you got two hundred pages of email. Under the emergency legislation that was passed by city council. Allowing us during the state's declaration to have virtual meetings. Because we're not doing face-to-face meetings. Possibly up to December first, because that's the, the expiration date of the state's emergency. The council set out the rules for its conduct as well as all of the commissions and boards. That there would be no public input during meetings, but instead that we would advertise and accept. Written correspondence from interested parties with comments, questions, and what have you. That's why you got two hundred pages worth of, of documentation.
Okay, I'll ask a number of questions. Bear with me, please. The standards for demolition and removal indicate that. There is, it has to be approved in order to get the certificate of appropriateness and ask clear evidence. That two or more of these following things have happened. Okay, I'm looking at that and interpreting it being a, a minimum threshold. That there has to be at least two to be even considered by the planning commission, but it's not mandatory. If it passes two, if it passes three. The planning commission still has discretion. Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. Item number two in those standards, talk about the structure is listed as non-qualifying. And Mr. Davis, you kind of focused it on that. Is there a definition in the ordinance as to what non-qualifying means? Or are we making an assumption that we're talking about not qualifying for the historic district?
No, yeah, the not qualifying, the assumption we made was on the National Register. Simply because I don't know what else non-qualifying stand for in the historic district. We know it already qualifies as a historic district. So the only thing left would be the National Register.
But that's an assumption on our part. I mean, there's nothing in the ordinance that defines what not qualifying is. Is that correct?
Not to my knowledge.
Anybody else have any questions?
I don't have a question. I have a concern that. Although we've had a lot of input from citizens, this is not a vehicle where they can be present personally to ask questions. It gives me a concern.
Well, and it's to go back to the times we are in, it's a concern that we all bear. Council has had the same concerns. However, in, in looking at the best practices across the state. In terms of the guidance from, from above, if you will. It's, it's not practical or possible to conduct the public part of this. We have gotten quite a bit of input on this through the email, however. And so we don't, you know, we don't have any alternative. The council in their, in their resolution did, you know, proclaim as part of their whereas is. That they wanted the business of the city to continue. It's specific in the resolution that the, the practices, procedures and the rules that apply to the city council. Meetings and their conduct would apply to all commissions and boards as well. So yeah, no, it's not perfect, but that's what we, that's what we have to operate on.
Do we have any legal time constraints on when we need to make a decision?
It states in the, it states in the process that planning commission must approve. Or approve with conditions, deny or table the application.
In what timeframe?
It does not state a timeframe.
Well, I've got a couple of other concerns. If since nobody's speaking up, I'll, I'll take the floor. Okay. How much, and we're talking about, one of the things that I would do if I were an owner and I wanted a property demolished was. Was to make this a public nuisance and then go ahead and rely on that. So that I could get it demolished. There is a lot of emails speculation going around here that the church was going ahead and. Not maintaining the property so as to put on a better show to become. Demolish this property. How much of the, the cost of the square foot cost of minimum building code? By their neglect, if any?
Hard to say by the cause of the neglect. What we took into consideration, we, we didn't. We really didn't factor in the cost of the, of the exterior property maintenance issue. And just so planning commission knows, the city of Troy, we contract with Miami County to do all interior inspection. So we can only enter property if invited. We have written up several items on the outside. Items such as rotten wood, peeling paint. Those are pretty minimal cost. When you look at the overall cost of everything else, what really got us was a lot of the interior items. The rafters that need to be replaced, repaired for, for the building, chief building official. The improvements that would be needed, I think if, if anybody, if any office wishes to move in there to do any upgrades. And once, once they touch the structure, they have to bring it up. That was what we really focused our, our efforts and attention to.
Okay, that, that kind of goes to item number four also. That talks about whether or not it's a public nuisance. You declared a, you public nuisance, even though. It's, it's their order to vacate is only directed to the owner of the property. I don't consider it a public nuisance if I can walk by that property and I'm not in danger in some fashion. Do, am I way off base on that?
Well, what we looked up to make sure that we were trying to interpret this correctly, we looked up the actual definition of public nuisance. From the ORC and I'll look at here, I put it in my reports.
I see it in your report. You said that the building's found to be a public nuisance means building that is a menace to the public health, welfare or safety. That is structurally unsafe, unsanitary, or not provided with adequate safe egress. That constitutes a fire hazard, is otherwise dangerous to human life. Maybe that's where you're coming from, or is otherwise no longer fit and inhabitable, you know, but with remediation it is. Or that in relation to its existing use constitute a hazard to the public health. And once again, I go back and say, listen, if anybody's walking by that thing, they, and didn't see the sign. They know that there's any problems inside that place, nor should we consider it in my opinion. But I'm, I want to hear somebody else talk about that.
I guess if, if I can follow up with that, I think part of what Tim just read. Deals with the interior and the, and the fact that this is lead paint and nobody can be in it. So just walking by and not having a stone or a piece of the roof falling off, that's one thing. But it sounded like the definition was pretty clear that it included interior and exterior. And the fact that the matter remains is it's uninhabitable because of the, of the lead. The lead paint. But if I can go back one, Al, because you went to four. The one before on the property maintenance, Tim, I, I thought that the criteria. Did not allow us to, to consider anything that was not essential to the habitability of the building. And that's why the four hundred thousand dollars worth of costs were focused on what. Mr. England from the county building said had to be done for somebody to be able to go back into the build.
That is correct.
That is correct. So the property maintenance didn't have anything to do with item number three, I think is what.
That's correct. It's talked about. We didn't really consider the, the cost to, to do the painting, to do some minor repairs on the outside. The cost that we focused on was the internal upgrades that would be needed, which we found were very significant. According to the chief building official and then the information submitted by the applicants with the certified structural engineer.
Thanks. So then back to number four.
Okay, so if I wanted to demolish a property and my outside was okay, and I wanted the property to be demolished. I go ahead and grow black mold on all the walls and then come before us and say, okay, we want the property demolished. Hey, I can't remediate this. Black mold's throughout the house and it would cost too much. It's my fault. I know it's my fault, but we, we can't consider that. Or can we consider?
Well, I think it, I think it could be considered. In this case, I don't think that applies. I think the, the items we were doing, I don't think the church had most of the issues on it. I know a lot of letters said that they were negligent, negligent owners. But when we looked at it, the knob tube and wiring was already in place when the church bought it. The rafters were already placed up there. Those were items that were sought out while we were reviewing the process to eliminate, while they were reviewing the process. To eliminate the lead based paint. So all these items kind of crumbled on top of each other. And then when we tried to address those individually, we found out that all of them would need to be repaired, which kind of created the mountain that we, we siphoned through. To determine that, yeah, the cost was a lot, a lot more than it would have been just to throw some paint on the outside and bring it.
And in, and in two thousand and thirteen, when they bought this property, they had the rights to inspect the property and find all this out and make the decision whether or not they wanted to buy it. And now we're saying, okay, we can bail them out because of the condition.
Well, I think, I think the code actually says that they cannot create. The, the, the issue, they can't let it deteriorate and then use it as their criteria. But if those, those criteria or those shortfalls existed well prior to. The church owning the property.
That is correct. And that's what I guess I was trying to say, especially with the. Well, with the electrical and the items in there, the rafters that were being put in, the church didn't put those in. They didn't put the, the lead based paint in. They didn't put the knob tube wiring in. Essentially, they purchased a property with those items in there. That was a part of the property from a long time ago. So I don't see that as them being neglectful of property owners and that, that just occurred from two thousand and thirteen to present day. That stuff was in the property.
I don't, I don't see it as the church being neglecting in regards, I mean, those, all those items listed are, again, those things are, were before from historic. I mean. I guess I, I would agree that I, I don't see that the church was neglecting the property and that means.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. McGary?
The concern that I had and was probably started last year when this thing was being considered to come before us. Is the, the criteria applies to judging whether or not it meets any of those four issues. Applies probably to the majority of the houses in the southwest district and also the downtown area of Troy. Every house that was painted prior to what, nineteen seventy-five, thereabouts. Has lead based painted. And the houses that exist now have been remediated, not by scraping down, not by removing the, all the wood trim. You know, they encapsulate it, you repaint it. We've, we've seen houses that have been restored. People haven't spent a half million dollars doing it. The knob and tube wiring, there's nothing wrong. There's the safety of knob and tube wiring is there. It's just a safe as roll match as long as it's maintained. Now, does it meet the code? No, but that's the same, that's electricity that was put into these houses up till probably nineteen thirty or nineteen forty. So all these houses that we have downtown now that are, they're old, had these conditions. Neither have been remediated or people are living in them. That sometime down the road, they're going to be remediated or somebody's going to buy them now and use this criteria to tear them down. This is, there's nothing unusual about this. The second thing that bothers me is the church bought this property in two thousand and thirteen. Whether they're aware or not aware of anything, the inspection came down, what, in two thousand and sixteen, three years later. And then if you go through the records of all the other information, no action was taken. Other than double jaded destroyed the thing until two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and twenty. And even that's including the building inspection report. That was in May of two thousand and twenty. And to me, that's, maybe it's not forgetting the collective maintenance of a building. That's the ownership neglected the piece of property that you own. That's, they let three years pass without even doing any work. Or seeing what it would take to get the work completed. Well, it, it's me, it's just setting a precedent for destruction or negligence, you know, for future. Future structures in the downtown area.
Well, I do think they had the property rented, right? And then it was, and then they were required to. Those people could no longer live in it because of the lead paint and that, correct? I mean, that's, they weren't leaving it. It was being rented and then they tried to rent it commercially and that was not, they were unable to do it at that point too. I, I do think there's been action that the church has tried to do to, to help improve the property, but.
Well, I guess my, my point being is that there's nothing unusual about any of these conditions that exist in that house. This, this wasn't like they moved out to west of I, of I seventy-five into a house that's, you know, fifty or twenty years old. That, that, that's the nature of these buildings downtown. And really, I find it very hard that anybody would be surprised to find these things.
I think what's unusual, at least from the staff standpoint, was they asked what they're doing, the reuse of the, of the property. It is zoned OR one. There's not, most of the properties, especially residential in the historic district are zoned, are zoned residential. So to kind of utilize the, the second criteria after the health department did vacate the residence. Which it was occupied until a couple of years ago, when they were ordered to vacate. I think even then the church had to go to the courts to have the, the landlords or to have the tenants to be removed. They did not willingly go on their own. So I, I think once that was settled, they had a chance to kind of go back through and determine what they wanted to do. Which led them to this reuse. And that's, to me, that's what's different from this property than all the other surrounding properties that you're mentioning. With these items in it. If they want to repair the property, especially with the lead based paint, they're going to have to deal with the asbestos. And then if they get into electricity to bring that up, and then, then you're opening a whole can of work. And, and that's, to me, that's what's different about this case versus a regular's residential property in the area.
And comments or questions to staff?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Sirington?
Thank you. Just to follow up, Jim, on your comment, I don't know that I necessarily agree that this is nothing. Unusual compared to the other structures in the historic district. I think one of the unique things about it is number one, they've tried to, to re, reuse it. And have been unable to, number two, they did get a, a declaration, basically a condemnation, I don't know if that's the right word. From the, the health district and number three, they, the scope of the deficiencies. And the amount that it would cost to remediate them. That's why those four criteria. Pretty high bars in the, in that section eleven forty-three twenty-two. That they have to meet two or more of them. So I, you know, I don't know. I, 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 I look at this as a little bit more unique than being one of the average structures in. In the downtown where seventy-five percent or whatever percentage you threw out there, I know it's just an estimate, but would fall into the same category.
Well, I, I think it's safe to say that every structure that was, that exists downtown today. Had exactly the same conditions exist for them at one point in time, whether the, whether they were restored or remodeled. In nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty, the seventies, eighties, whatever, you know, they bring it up to code. This is not a surprise that a house that's built in that timeframe would have these, have these code deficiencies. That's, that goes with the territory. What bothers me the most is the fact that they, they were, they had a problem and they, they haven't done a thing. With it to maintain it. They spent more money getting estimates and paying kind of people to go in and justify their, their need to tear things down. When, you know, there's nothing evidence that they tried to get a painter to go in there and try to encapsulate the paint. Make it a, make it a safe. make it a make it a safe uh safe building that they could rent. That those are those are basic things that landlords do.
Uh Mr. McGary, Mr. McGary, um you mentioned encapsulating the paint. I asked that specific question and was told that uh uh they could not do that, that they had to remove that paint. Uh and that was the only remediation that would be acceptable to allowing reoccupancy of the building. Is that not correct?
Yeah, that's uh that's from the Ohio Department of Health.
I have a question.
This is it.
So I I have kind of been feeling what Jim McGary's been been saying that I'm there's probably several houses in the southwest historic district that have the same issue. So are we saying if you purchase a house and don't put money into it to fix it up, are are we just going to let it be torn down?
Well, I think you got to compare apples to apples. This this is the case where the Ohio Department of Health, I don't know if any other health district order on any other property in downtown exists. In addition to that, a lot of the interior items, I mean, without going through all the homes, I think it's hard to say that this does exist in those properties. I mean, you're making an assumption uh of those properties. So I don't know if if that's a very comparable statement.
Can I ask how much money was spent um on the house when they first bought it?
Yeah, those numbers, uh we do have that number. Uh you're talking about the purchase price?
Not the purchase price. How much money was put into the house to fix it up when they purchased it, to make any remediation?
That that I do not know, and I do not have. I would have to refer to uh the church to get that information.
Because I'm wondering if there were any attempts to remediate the house at all when they purchased it.
Well, I don't know if they knew. Obviously, they didn't know that the uh lead wasn't issued when they purchased the property. Uh I think as Mr. Cavers pointed out, there there was a information sent over where they they didn't have some of the inspections done on it. So I don't think they were aware that there was lead-based paint issues. This was going to happen. That didn't occur until about a year or a year or two ago, when they were ordered to vacate it. So I think that was in seventeen or eighteen. Um that's when that that came through.
How much is the lead remediation?
Um it was broken down. The lead abatement was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So that could have been done, and then the family would still be living in the house.
If that would be, if they would be brought in, if they started to do uh removal of that, and then they had would have to deal with the plaster with the asbestos, then they would have to remove the asbestos. And if they got into any wiring, removing these items or uh replacing some of the rotten boards, that's when all the costs go up, and they they have to repair that to bring it up to building code. That that to us was was the main factor, um not just the one item. It was all the items combined on top of each other, one leads to another. And that's what led us to make our decision for the recommendation for removal.
And can I ask how many times has the city cited the building, the house for zoning violations?
So we have um we have a lot property maintenance, yeah, zoning, uh maybe not so much because it was it was properly zoned and being used properly. Uh over the time, we've used uh property maintenance, we've had tall grass. A couple of times, at one point, we had an an open door that was, we just contacted the church. They closed with our police department. Uh we actually have written them a letter. They have a a essentially a letter now that addresses um rotten rotten wood, uh replacement of some some missing shingles, uh damaged boards, things of that nature. There they have a letter now that's open. They have an open case on those items. Um and that's obviously if demolition did not occur, then they would be held to following those mental standards, just as any other property in the historic district would.
Well, I walk around, I walked around the block today, and it's like, hmm, probably you could call several of those houses nuisances. Um I'm I'm just wondering if there's other houses, maybe the health department hasn't been called in, but how many of those houses would actually be their nuisances if the health department got in there? I know, that's just surprising.
Yeah, I do know that we had folks, especially with the tornado that happened in January, there was a lot of uh items uh on homes that were hit and damaged. Uh what we did at the staff level was we waited until the end of March to to send out friendly letters to say this item needs to be addressed, or this is no longer in compliance. Uh that way, it gave time for property owners to deal with insurance companies and provide us a plan. So there are quite a bit of properties uh that you may have seen in the items of interest in council packets that uh that show that we have addressed uh quite a bit of properties in our downtown, and we're still addressing uh quite a bit of commercial properties in downtown that were were damaged the same way. So, yeah, there's a there's a lot of uh there's a lot of items that are being addressed in the historic district.
I'm I'm very torn on this because I I understand that if you if you fix this home, it's going to be an astronomical. But I also understand the side of losing this house, and and I'm having a very difficult time trying to figure out where to come down on this.
I don't have a question, but again, I think it's very unfortunate that a property of this age was purchased without every inspection that might have turned up some of these problems before it was purchased. And I know that's after the fact, but it could happen to anybody buying a property of that age if you don't look at everything. I think it's unfortunate that it came to this.
Yeah, especially a board of trustees uh who are volunteers, usually making those decisions. Sometimes um they're focused on other items and may not have the expertise they need. So sometimes that may have come into play.
But it seems like a full-fledged and um but what was the word used? What was the word?
Whole house inspection.
The whole house inspection would have turned this stuff up.
Whole house inspections usually don't deal with lead-based painters. But they had the opportunity to get that as well, and they chose enough to, apparently.
What efforts have been made to sell the property?
Uh what efforts have been made to sell the property? I believe it was on, was it on the market?
I believe they attempted to do that. I know they I know they uh when it was vacated, they tried to, I thought it was for sale or rent uh as a commercial or I guess as a office use, I'll call that commercial uh for a short period of time, according to the letter submitted by the applicant Linda Bozick. They tried for a year with no takers, and I think they decided it was because of all the all the repairs they would get into. If they wanted to um kind of redesign the inside and and renovate it, you'd have to deal with those costs. Once again, you're beating the electric and bringing those up to code. We're just too much for that. So uh that's that's the information that I know of.
Would it be that it was ever priced?
Uh it had the church would have to answer that question. I do not know if there was a price put on that or what the price was.
Well, one thought that I've got is I I think you can determine what the property would be worth vacant. And they they can get a price for what it would take to tear it down. And I just wonder if the uh church would be willing to sell it for the difference between those two things.
Yeah, that would be a question for the church. Yep.
Yeah, but I'm not sure. How does that factor into our decision? I I mean, we're getting into, I think we're getting into private property issues, aren't we?
If if it can be sold and somebody's willing to rehab it for the right kind of price. I remember when uh the the building down where the Chamber of Commerce is on on the other end, when the roof collapsed, I know myself and the building inspector took a look at it and decided chances are this building is going to have to go. Well, Parker Bem, by leveraging insurance, uh was able to actually save the building.
Well, I that that's always a possibility. There are a couple of cases since I've been here where uh downtown buildings that were very close to uh receiving a decision to demolish uh were turned around because they got a developer on board. Again, though, that's really uh the the property owner's decision to make, and whether or not they want to sell uh and that's still an option for them really is not one of the considerations that this board, I I don't think is my role anyway on this board to to intervene.
Well, isn't it our role to determine whether the building should be saved or not?
No, it's our deter it's our it's it's our, I see our role is broader than that. Saving it is is certainly one consideration, but I think the other one is is number one, is it worth saving? If it's not saved, will it have an impact on the downtown? Uh uh in this case, historic district, will it uh will it change the um the frontier, the landscape uh in that area? And that's why, unlike some of the other subjective decisions that we have to make, uh this, at least in this case, there are criteria, minimum criteria that we consider before we uh that that have to be met before we even consider a demolition.
Well, the argument is economics. If it can be preserved by considering the price of demolition versus the price after demolition, uh maybe the economics might work out to to keep the building.
Um if it's if there's an estimated cost of four hundred thousand dollars on top of the hundred, whatever they paid for, it was a hundred and ten.
It was a hundred and eighty.
Five hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that residential structure. I I didn't do the math, but uh I find it hard to believe that that break even would be even close, let alone more profitable for them to uh return the house to uh to occupancy.
And that's my concern is that if this is what we're looking at for this house, that we could run it several houses in the southwest historic district that would just be torn down because people don't want to put money into them. Granted, four hundred and some thousand dollars. I don't know if I were the owner that I'd want to put that much money into it to fix it up. And I think why do you buy a house knowing that that's what it's going to cost? To figure that.
Well, I I guess I may comment. I don't think most do. Um I don't think that's I think they meet the criteria. I think they're good stewards of the community. I mean, they have a a large portion of that um of the um of the lot. So I I I think, you know, we're reading into some of this information where we're saying they neglected. I don't believe that the church neglected in their activities. If anything, I think they worked hard to try to figure out what the best move is for all parties. Um and so again, to ask them to pay, you know, almost two and a half times in improvements and almost have a six hundred thousand dollar investment, um I think that's really difficult for anybody. Um and again, another part that it's not historic and it's not available to be on the historic register, I think is a factor there, too.
I see Bobby's on here. Can can we ask if Bobby has any input?
I don't think so. You can ask questions of the applicant. Uh it wouldn't be fair to those people who are uh against the applicant in this case.
Well, he was speaking on behalf of the church on behalf of the applicant.
Yeah. I don't know that we can take public comment.
Well, but no, he is representing, he is the applicant. He's representing the applicant, so it's not really public comment.
Mr. Tarrington, is that within the resolution of council?
Uh Patrick stepped out of the room for just one second. If you'd give him one second. He just walked back in. Sorry.
Back. Thank you.
The question was.
We have a procedure issue.
Yes.
Mayor Oda would like to hear from a representative of the applicant.
I guess that that would be
Is that within the council resolution?
My recommendation is to give him thirty seconds.
Speak louder, please. We can't hear you.
You probably didn't want to hear what I had to say. So I have unmuted Mr. Phillips, so uh he should be really should only answer any questions that you might have directly.
Well, the question to you is, is the council resolution permit public comment or comment from the applicant at these hearings?
It it uh it it allows for applicants answering questions directed by the public body. Um it's the general public comment that it does not allow. So as long as you keep the two questions and it's just answering those questions as the applicant, that's appropriate.
Okay, Mary Oda, if if you would go and phrase a question to Mr. Phillips, we'll let Mr. Phillips answer, please.
I will defer if somebody else has a specific question. I didn't have a specific question. I just wanted to hear from the applicant in regards to the discussion.
Thank you.
Well, if I could ask a question, do I understand that you that Mr. Phillips is representing the the church?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, as I understand it, the issue that we're dealing with and the reason why you're asking to uh demolish the building is is purely economics. Is that correct?
It is economical. Yes, it's economics at the moment and and preparing for our future plans, whatever that might be.
Okay, so if the economics were to say that the cost of the demolition as compared to the value of the property after demolition would make sense, would you consider selling the property for that difference?
No. The property has never, when we purchased the property, it was never intended uh to buy it and then sell it down the road. It is because we are landlocked here. Future expansion of the of the uh mission of the church is what uh we're trying to protect. And with the two properties behind us, the Cherry Street and the Plum Street property, uh they offer us uh expansion possibilities as our missionary uh uh items grow.
So the intention when you property was to tear it down, is that correct?
Eventually, yes.
Any other questions of Mr. Phillips?
Well, if I I'm going to put this in terms of a more of a question because I understand if I were to make a motion to table, that's non-debatable.
Correct.
This is not a move.
And so
But do I understand that we're we're under the constraints of, is that correct?
Uh you you cut in and out, Mr. Wolke, uh but I think I understand what you were saying. The uh the code does not specifically list tabling as an option. It lists approving, modifying, or disproving, disapproving the legislation, uh the the application. Um with regards to tabling in general, uh a tabling motion is non-debatable, but a tabling motion is only appropriate if there's something that suddenly comes up in a uh a meeting agenda where you have to put that aside to deal with an emergency and then you come back to it. If it were, if it were uh one of the options listed in the in section eleven forty-three, uh it would be more appropriately as a postponing indefinitely, which then is debatable.
And again, that's according to Robert's rules.
Yeah, un- unfortunately, this uh format is not conducive to the kind of decision-making that we're we're having. We've got a number of people uh in the community and a number of people representing the church that both sides have, I I think, some valid things to present to us, and we uh might have a better opportunity to uh to have discussion with those people, but this format is not a is not conducive to that. Now, I know why we're doing it, and the 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 virus is is certainly uh playing havoc with a lot of things, but uh but I'm, you know, I I'm not making this as a tabling motion, but I'm I'm very concerned that this is not the appropriate format.
Well, and unfortunately, the council has had to conduct their meetings the same way as well as the park board and the rec board, uh all the boards and commissions as well. So you're right, it is just the atmosphere that we're in.
Mr. Tarrington, uh will a uh the applicant be able to submit a second petition for demolition at some time in the future? Or they're bound by this decision?
Reapply?
Yes.
I I don't think there's any limitation on the number of applications that they submit, correct?
That's correct. Um yeah, they they could submit, I guess, again, in the future. In some cases, uh there's a time limit that they couldn't, like the board is only a field. They can't reapply within six months, but that provision does not apply to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff or comments by a planning commission? Yes.
Can council reconsider um their motion to not allow public comments?
Well, they could, but uh then you're asking them to take a look at that entire piece of legislation, which then would apply to, to all the boards and commissions as well as council, council meetings. And hopefully, by the time there'd be action on something like that, we'll have a better idea when we'll be able to go back to live in-person meetings anyway. You know, Mr. Wolke, as I mentioned, a, a more appropriate motion would, would be postponing it indefinitely or of course, just taking action on the application. And then the postponing would, would bring with it some debate before there's a vote.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that I may vote against. Just to get a discussion of this, I will make a, a motion to postpone this issue indefinitely.
Okay, you broke up there, Mr. Wolke. I understand your motion to be, that you are making a motion to postpone consideration of this issue indefinitely. Is that correct?
That's the motion, only so that we can get a discussion of it. I may vote against it myself.
Okay, but there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion, a second. Now we can have further discussion. Mr. Wolke, you wanna lead it off?
No, I wanna get input from the rest of the commission.
Okay.
I, I guess the one else I look at it is, I think there's almost a greater value to the community or the neighborhood for what the church, you know, what it has there as a whole. And, and to try to, you know, to have a, the church put another, you know, over four hundred thousand dollars in a, a property, I, I just think that's, that's the wrong way to, I think that's very difficult to do, to ask to do. And I think there's a greater value there to the, to the block that the church provides when you look at it as a whole. And I think that's how I kinda read into it and look at it as, as the church is presenting their plan is, you know, there, there is, there is a greater value to that neighborhood and to historic society as the church. And it makes their, you know, it, you know, it helps, I think, and overall. That's, that's my opinion. I, I don't think they neglected, and I, I think, again, I think it helps overall.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I, I, I don't disagree with you. My concern is, is that while there's been significant input, albeit in writing, email, or digitally, I guess, instead of in, in public, there has been, we have gotten a significant amount of feedback in, on both sides. We all admitted at the, at the beginning of the meeting that we've read the, the materials. We understand the themes, the talking points and the arguments on both sides, I think. I guess I don't wanna speak for the other six of you, but they were pretty, pretty clear-cut. You know, the, I, I think where it, I think it's less unfair, and I apologize for keep you, I keep using double negatives, but it is less unfair to the, to the public or the neighbors that have been able to provide input than it is to the property owner, whether it's the church or whoever, given the fact that the longer that we delay, the more the property does deteriorate. And so if the ultimate decision is to reject the, the, giving them a certificate of appropriateness, then they are faced with probably even more property maintenance items as it, as it deteriorates on the, on the outside in addition to the four hundred thousand plus to, to get the inside so it's occupiable. So they're left hanging, if you will, not knowing which direction. But as a, as a city trying to hold all properties equally, having other property maintenance letters having been issued throughout the year, and this one pending on purpose so that we could have this discussion and decision as to whether they should throw money at the demolition or either or, in other words, and not both, delaying this decision, I don't think serves, serves the greater good, regardless of how we decide, until we decide it.
Well, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the, you know, how much, how much input we're gonna get from the public or whether that's necessarily a factor. But I, I would assume any delay we have is only gonna delay this thing, you know, on the outset, what, a couple of months? This has been before, it's been brought to the, to the city over the period of the law, the last eighteen months. As I, as I understand, it's been, it's been brought forth twice and was turned down. One was, what, one in November and one was earlier, about a year ago?
No, it received, it received staff review one time and, and they didn't meet the criteria. So we advised them that they needed to do more research before they came to the planning commission. And they, they could have come anyway, but they chose not to submit what they had.
Well, I guess the, the point being, it's, it hadn't been delayed. But, you know, if they, if they demolish it tomorrow, there, there's a certain amount of maintenance and maybe more maintenance, it's, it's gotta be taken for cutting, cutting a vacant lot with the mowing and, you know, landscaping and that. I don't see where a, a short delay is gonna increase any burden on the church. I mean, they have less lawn to mow right now. I mean, they don't, you know, I don't think anybody saw them. They have to go inside and clean it up unless, I mean, a leaky roof. Well, yeah, I would hope that they would have gotten that fixed, but they chose not to.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a clarifying question then?
Go right ahead.
Jim, so you, you started out by saying that you weren't as concerned about the public input. Then what would be your reason for postponing indefinitely?
No, I'm not saying I'm not, I, I, I should reward that. I'm not saying I'm not concerned about the public input. But setting that aside, I don't see where the delay is going to inhibit what the, any, any, put any particular burden on the church. I mean, including if there's, if there's holes in the roof, I would have hoped that since the tornado, somebody would have gone up there and thrown up some tarp paper or in the worst case, a blue tarp. But, you know, they saw fit not to do that, so that.
Just to clarify, it's not, according to staff, it's not holes in the roof, it's missing shingles. Which could lead to holes in the roof, but it's not.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I know there's water damage on the inside and things like that that I assumed was the roof, but.
The motion before the planning commission at present, as I understand it, is to delay the decision on the demolition indefinitely. Mr. Wolke made the motion so we could comment. My first comment on the motion is that I think we have enough information already to make a decision, one way or the other. I think we've gotta follow our guts. As far as that ultimate decision's concerned, this is a very tough call. I, I know that the applicant is very, a very good steward of the property that they currently own. Other, other than this property perhaps, they're very well-respected in town. The congregation is utmost in my mind. The, the other issue, however, if you're doing a weigh-in balancing test, it's like, do I weigh and balance the, the interest of the church versus the way, weigh and balance the interest of the entire Southwest Historic District, who may come into play and feel aggrieved by the fact that we're demolishing one of their properties or permitting the demolition of one of their properties? So I'm having a very tough time with that, but I, I don't see any reason to delay the decision and further discussion on those issues. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, well, let's call the roll on the motion. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wolke, but the motion was to delay the decision on the demolition indefinitely.
Ospone indefinitely.
Ospone indefinitely.
Okay.
Yes, and that's only because apparently a tabling motion to a date certain is inappropriate.
All right. Please call the roll, knowing that an affirmative vote will delay the decision for some future time.
Ready?
Go right ahead.
Mr. Cappers?
Uh, no.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
We didn't hear you, Sue.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mayor Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
No.
Mr. Westmeyer?
No.
The motion is adopted.
Okay, the matter has been delayed indefinitely until some future time. Anything else to come before the commission?
Nothing today, thank you.
Okay, hearing nothing else, well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close.
We stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.